This meeting of the regular meeting of the Wayne'sboro Planning Commission for Tuesday, January 17th, 2023, and law review, could you be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so we need to adopt our agenda. Somebody want to make a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make the motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Everyone in favor of adopting the agenda?
Aye.
Everyone not in favor, oops, hit the hammer. Everyone had a chance to review last week's minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Anybody have any comments or anything? Someone want to make a motion to approve them?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from last month's meeting.
I'll second.
Everyone in favor of approving them?
Aye.
Anyone not? The minutes are approved. We have a public comment period for items not on the agenda, but we don't have any agenda, so we can probably fly right past them and come to the election of the chair and the vice chair.
I nominate Shannon Bowles as chairman of the planning commission.
Second.
Okay, so do I like ask them to vote for me? Do I? Okay, everyone in favor of having me keeping the chair, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so I guess.
Go COVID.
Chair, we need to nominate a vice. Is there someone who would be particularly interested in being vice chair?
I'd like to make a nomination.
Okay.
Will Florrie for vice chair.
I'll second.
Okay, everyone in favor of Will being vice chair?
Aye.
Okay, Will is the vice chair.
Thank you for your faith in me, one meeting in. I appreciate it.
Well, I think in all of the years that I've been chair of the planning commission, I don't think I've ever asked a vice chair to do anything. But should I suddenly?
I look forward to upholding that high standard of service.
Should I suddenly be taking ill, like you'll have to swing the hammer?
Or she hits a lottery.
That's right.
Oh, I wouldn't give it up if I hit the lottery.
I don't know if I'd have hit for $1.3 billion. They probably never would have seen me again.
I'd have just paid a lot of changes too. Okay, so now we move on to reviews, promote review, proposed amendments to the planning commission bylaws. And I can tell Alex Sand is really excited to talk to us about this. I think we talked about them last week, right? We're just kind of reviewing them?
Yes, I'm going to be doing it for our. It's easy to do this, we'll show you the work I've been working on, work our way through the proposed changes.
Oh, perfect.
So the first change is for the duties of the commission and. Heard our conversations about this. Prior to these changes, the planning commission was supposed to prepare and deliver an annual report to council September 30th, by September 30th of each year. So the change that we're proposing would be to follow the calendar year instead. So prepare the annual report by the December 31st and present it to council in January. So this change would just put that in place, have the planning commission follow the calendar year instead of the September to October, maybe like what's previous. So that's this, so that's this change. The next change was for the election of chair and vice chair. That previously was again following that same September. Okay, sorry, going through a little too fast. So the next thing was the election of chair and vice chair, so it takes place in September every year, change that again to follow the calendar year. So January, at the January meeting, the election of chair and vice chair will take place. So we made that change. And then the rest of the changes were a mix of updating verbiage to match the current city titles and also to ensure that the bylaws were following state code requirements. So the next section, the substitute clerk, this just changed to reflect that there's no longer a planning director, there is now a city planner and then a director of community development. So we changed that verbiage to match for city planner. And that is the case, duties of chair as well, updating that verbiage. And then that regular meetings, that was just to remove the city planning permission just to make it consistent with the other use of the planning mission phrase. So the next big change is in the special meetings section. This was where the bylaws deviated from state code. And so this, so what is shown here now is basically pervading state code and it takes the place of what was there before. So now if there's a special meeting called by the chair or two members or two members upon request, the clerk will mail out at least five days in advance a special meeting with a notice at some time in place. And then also follow any other notice requirements at that time. So that's what this, this change is addressing right here. The next change was for the cancellation of West Covenant meeting. Prior to this change, the only reason a meeting could be canceled was with a majority vote or consent of all the members of the planning mission. And in some cases, in the past, since I've been here, there's also been, there's already canceled meetings because there's been nothing for the agenda. And so there's been communication between staff and the chair to cancel, make a decision to cancel that meeting. And so basically, this just puts in the bylaws that that is an activity that can be made as well, between communication, staff and chair. So next thing again, just updating the language of the decency. Probably the final change.
Oh my gosh, planning commissions, like they could go till 10 o'clock, that would be really long waiting.
It's nice, it is nice that it does have a cutoff time though in the bylaws because some don't.
Wow, I'm glad they read that. God.
Can we change that to none?
Okay, so the last change is in the general procedure. It's down. Insert the, this is how a public hearing would work. Prior to this change, there wasn't actually any place in sort of order of procedure for the petitioner, the applicant to respond to the comments brought up prior to the public meeting. And so that was, we just put that in here after the comments were in favor and there's an opposition, then the petitioner can respond to those comments. So that, we insert that here just to make that call it would be contested. So those are all the changes to the bylaws. You all need, will need to approve and then it will go to city council for ratification and then that will seal the changes.
Okay, so we need to make a motion to approve these changes?
Yes.
Okay, does somebody want to make a motion to approve the changes to the Wayne'sboro City Planning Commission bylaws as presented by Alex Sandis?
I'll make that motion, Jen.
Second.
Everybody in favor of accepting the changes as described?
Aye.
Oh, anybody not motion carried? Gosh, I'm a little heavily hammered.
Drowning out that opposition, I like.
All right, now. Alex Sand can't get enough of the change today. Presentation of the annual report.
At least for this one, I can stand up. Okay, so this is an overview of the planning commission's activities and also the planning department's activities in 2022. So we'll start with the development highlights. Over the course of 2022, you all reviewed, let's see, nine, 11 applications total. We had two zoning text amendments, one earlier in the year for the parking maximum amendment that was to allow parking access of maximum as long as it was screened. And then also the one we heard in December, which was temporary special events. There's also four rezonings. Three were for potential subdivisions. We had the Zero Ivy Street, which is the Hannah's Ridge, RS 12, RS 7. We had Kira Heights, which was trying to go from RS 12 to RS 7, and it was eventually withdrawn. Then you had the Ludewitt Apartments, which went from HB to RMF, and then Zero Windigrove Drive, which was trying to amend their approved PUD. That ended up being tabled by council for more information about traffic. You also reviewed two conditional use permits, the ADU on Red Top Orchard Road, the build to line modification for 222 South Wayne Avenue, and then also three preliminary plats, Hannah's Ridge, Kira's Heights, and then Wayne'sboro Heights. And here's sort of the, the trend for the last 10 years as far as development applications go and sort of much more average, this year was more average in regards to rezoning as compared to last year, which we had nine rezonings last year, so. And then just a quick map showing the distribution of the applications where they came from within the city. Now, as far as construction goes for residential, construction continued at the two newest subdivisions that broke ground late 2021, Ivy Commons and Creekwood Village. They now do have houses actually up and they're continuing construction work on that. We had the final phases of Evershire under construction still with that, I believe they finally made that connection to Ivy Street via the new Vine Street with the new single family part of Evershire, and then they're also continuing on the townhouses. And then the older subdivisions, Thomasville and Anna Marie, they are continuing to have some building happening over there. And then, of course, we had the three new preliminary plats that will eventually be developed, not sure how long. New residential building permits are down a little bit from the 130 issued last year in 2021. Only 116 were issued this year, but still all above average for what had been, had been the trend for Wayne'sboro. It's about 11% decrease, I guess, over this year compared to last year, but still building does remain strong. Now getting into some of the other planning efforts that the city took part in, the big one this year was the Port Republic Neighborhood Plan. After a couple of years of delays due to COVID-19, we did finally get that planning process underway early spring of 2022. The city worked with, or the city and the neighborhood group, the Port Republic Road Historical and Community Association, worked with EPR, which was the consultant that was originally chosen back in, I think, 2019 when this process first got started. We worked with them and started the plan with a series of conference calls between the neighborhood group and the city and EPR, and then I used that to establish a framework for the plan itself by hosting, hosted two events over the course of the planning, or over the course of the development of the plan. The first event was a neighborhood meeting that was held in early May. It was held at Rosenwald and included a walking tour that was led by Mr. Carl McCutcheon Senior to give us all history of the neighborhood. The second event was an intensive workshop that was held over three days in early June, and that's where a lot of the, the work to develop the plan took place. Three goals came out of that plan, preservation, which meant to document, present, and effectively communicate Port Republic's history to foster community pride, appreciation, and a continuation of its values in the future, and then also reinvestment, which translates to pursuing efforts to spur reinvestment in economic development that helps Port Republic thrive and grow while preserving its past. And then finally, the third goal was quality of life, which is investing in the people of Port Republic to improve the overall quality of life and well-being. The plan included four action items that addressed each goal, and those, in each of those action items included a table that included the rationale for the action, measures of success, an actual timeframe for completion, identification of responsible parties, list of resources, and where to find those resources. And the plan was presented to council in the fall and adopted in November. And then also, work is continuing on the Brownfields grant that was awarded to the city by the EPA back in 2020. We had several Phase One environmental site assessments conducted over the course of 2022, including one at the future site of Virginia Natural History Museum, which has a long history of industrial use. And work is still continuing to identify additional interest of property owners to make use of those funds. And also went through and applied for several transportation-related grants this past year. The first was VDOT Smart Scale Round Five. This is a biannual program that allows localities to apply for VDOT transportation infrastructure grants and city, localities, Wayne'sboro sites can apply, apply to, or excuse me, submit up to four applications each cycle, and Wayne'sboro applied for three projects this, this round. The first application was for roundabout at the intersection of Rossar, Main, and Broad And that would replace the current signalized intersection and also reduce the number and severity of crashes and provide safer pedestrian crossings along with improving traffic flow. The second application was for an I-64 westbound exit 194 ramp improvements. That would add a 550-foot right turn lane with a 400-foot taper, and that would result in creating dual right turn lanes if funded. And then the final project, or the final application was for the Croze Tunnel Trail, which is that 1.3-mile shared use path that follows 250 up to the, the Blue Ridge Tunnel and will officially be notified sometime in the first quarter of this year if we were successful in those applications.
We, I did check today, the Commonwealth Transportation Board met today, and they receive a staff recommended funding scenario, and there can be tweaks from that recommended scenario. Over the next two months, they'll be able to make tweaks if any, but at this time, under that funding scenario, we were, they recommended the main Broad, Rossar, Roundabout. The other two did not show up on the recommended funding scenario, but that one does show.
Okay, and so the next one that we applied for was the Virginia Highway Safety Improvement Program, HCP. This is the first time in, in several years that this has actually been available. It's a federal and state-funded program that provides grants to localities to implement roadway safety improvements. And this round, they were specifically targeting systemic safety initiatives that included high-visibility backplates, flashing yellow arrows, pedestrian crossings, road diets, unsignaled intersections, and then curved delineation. And so the city actually submitted two applications for this, for this grant, and therefore a mix of those. We requested high-visibility signal backplate for 20 intersections, flashing yellow left turn arrows for nine intersections, and then pedestrian crossing treatments for 15 intersections, and some of those overlap intersections, multiple ones for, for a single intersection. And we should be notified if our applications were successful in the first quarter of this year as well.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
What is a high-visibility signal backplate?
You know those yellow frames around signal lights? Stop. Signal lights, they used to be black, but now the yellow ones are popping up.
I think I'm not 100% sure.
So VDOT require, like any VDOT maintained road, now they have to have a high-vis backplate?
Okay.
So with this process, I think it was roughly, what we were quoted was like roughly $1,000, anywhere from $800 to $1,000 a backplate to get the high-vis plating on it. So we applied for 20 different intersections, but it's just supposed to provide, you know, a lot more visibility so that for some reason, people wouldn't miss it.
Okay.
I believe it's designed to help block the sun when it comes, on certain intersections, when it comes down and is in line with the lights.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure that, that and just the contrast in colors really help people see it.
I wasn't sure what it was.
And then the final grant we applied for last year was through the Office of Intermodal Planning and Investment, and we applied for funds for their growth and accessibility planning and technical assistance program in the hopes of using that, those funds to develop a citywide bicycle and pedestrian plan. And we were supposed to receive word last week whether or not we were awarded funding for this, but hopefully later this month. And if we are awarded funding, then the work for that will begin in February 2023 and hopefully conclude by the end of the year, and we'll have, we would have a, a brand-new bicycle and pedestrian plan, fingers crossed. And then there are a couple of regional efforts going on that kicked off last year. The first was a regional housing study. The Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission was awarded $200,000, awarded a $200,000 community impact grant for Virginia housing to begin work on a regional housing study. They kicked this off in the spring of 2022 with some locality meetings and also stakeholder meetings. And it's expected that the study will be completed in late 2024, and it will provide detailed information about the status of the housing in the region, including affordability, supply, and then also characteristics. So it'll be interesting to see that when it, when it comes out.
And just kind of a, an additional note on that is that it's a two-year study, so a lot of data collection has happened in the first year, and then we do expect kind of a regional approach, obviously, but also locality-specific recommendations for housing, so we look forward to those. And then in addition, just as part of the regional housing study, staff has received a lot of great education on housing data, how to, you know, capture it, tabulate it, things to look out for, so it's been really helpful for staff too.
And then the last thing I have for you is the SAW MPO Intersection Safety Study. This is a small study that the Stanton Augusta Wayne'sboro Metropolitan Planning Organization kicked off work on. It's a six-intersection study, and it's going to examine two intersections in each of the member localities, Augusta County, Stanton, and Wayne'sboro. Wayne'sboro's two selected intersections were Delphine Avenue at Windsor Road and then Delphine Avenue at the I-64 exit 96 westbound exit and entrance ramps. So they're going to examine the current conditions and then also make recommendations for safety improvements.
And these intersections were chosen, VDOT, or with the SAW MPO, VDOT kind of reviewed a list of intersections that have yet to receive any kind of study treatment and those that kind of rose to the top as far as safety and crash data was concerned. And so these were two that have relatively high kind of crash data associated with them and then also had not received any study treatment so far.
Right. And that concludes the report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
On the Croze Tunnel application, how they, how they going to deal with the railroad? Because I understand the railroad is a stumbling block to getting that into Wayne'sboro.
So the Smart Scale is what we have used, well, we, that part of the Croze Tunnel Trail, we did apply for in a previous round of Smart Scale and in this round, and based on the recommended funding scenario, it, it didn't get funded. And staff has kind of recognized that Smart Scale is probably not the avenue to apply for that type of project. Yes, the railroad is something that will be, you know, it'll certainly affect cost of the project and then, you know, would likely need to be revisited to kind of talk logistically about what that crossing looks like. There is a, some federal grant money out there. In the past, we applied for a build grant, and we're not successful, but the build grant has been kind of re-envisioned as the new raise grant. And so staff has kind of had some very preliminary discussions of, you know, is that an avenue we go for, for that? But yeah, the railroad, it will be kind of a, an issue of how that crossing's made.
Now, do we have to purchase the right-of-way or have the owners of that large tract of land said, we'll give you a right-of-way?
Yeah, so I mean, there have been some preliminary plans related to the trail, but I don't think there's been any, you know, right-of-way discussion, obviously, no right-of-way acquisition, any of that. So right now, it's a conceptual plan. The raise grant that I just spoke about, they have the, you do have the opportunity to apply for planning grants or construction grants, so that'll be some discussions that staff will be having amongst ourselves and with council of, you know, kind of what avenue we take. Do we need a round of planning grants to kind of hone down that cost a little bit more and the environmental a little bit more prior to applying for some future construction grant?
So thank you very much for all your work.
Yep.
In the annual report and all your work throughout the whole year. I think we had a good year.
Yeah.
Okay, and then now we move on to number eight. We have a few minor subdivision and final subdivision plots approved since the December 2022 meeting, 2020, 22.
Okay, I do have one of these for you tonight. This was a minor subdivision plat for tax map numbers 31, 6-16, and then also 15. It's located midway down Ludewitt Boulevard, right across from the location of the new firehouse, actually. And this plat, they are basically combining the two parcels into one, so they're removing that center property line to make it one parcel.
Is there a goal in mind?
I believe he's developing them into office units, if I recall correctly. So aside from that, I'm not sure.
Who's the developer? Brett Hayes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so likely by combining them, you know, then they don't have to, like the setbacks that will be required from the parcel boundaries, and so it's probably just easier for the development plan, whatever that, that is.
So I think we have met everyone new. I want to introduce Kenny Lee, our city council rep here. So I think we have met everyone new. I want to introduce Kenny Lee, our city council rep here. Welcome him. And I think who else, you all kind of have met, Gordon's, you know, you all?
Actually, I do.
Any others?
So if we could, just for official purposes, have a vote to recommend the annual report because, or approve the annual report, because then we'll take that and present it to council, maybe next week.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2022 annual report.
Second. Go ahead. I'll second that motion.
Okay. Everyone in favor of sending the annual report to city council, say aye?
Aye.
Everyone not?
Thank you.
Okay, any other things anybody has to say?
I've just got a question, just personally. Is there, I know city council has like numbers that people can be reached. And I'm just wondering, is there a list that we have for ourselves or, or do we just need to ask each individual what their number is? You know, if we.
I don't know, our numbers were on the website.
Yeah, are they? I'm trying to think. So I don't think, yeah, I don't think your numbers are on the website anymore. But we do have a list and, you know, yeah, if anyone, I mean, if any citizen asked for your numbers, we would also be obligated to provide it. So yes, we can send out a list of all of your contact information to all of you, so you have all that.
Unless anybody has an issue with that.
Most of the time, I don't know where my phone is.
And I'm not always by my phone reading.
Emails, well, my view is lost at the shop.
So if a member of the public calls and asks, they can get my personal cell phone number?
They would be, no, they would be able to get whatever number you would want used as your public, in your public business. They would have to have a way to contact you.
Got it.
But no, we would not have to give all information, but whatever public number you would want them to be able to contact.
Can we just do an email?
Yeah.
I think that's what I'd like to do. I don't mind you having my cell phone number.
Sure, sure.
And you guys have my cell phone number. I also certainly want the public to have my.
Sure, yeah, we can put a list together that will circulate for your all's purposes and then we'll be clear, kind of, okay, now which one do you want available to the public? So we'll make that clear. Yeah. Because currently, so you all don't, you all use, you don't have city emails.
Right.
No.
Which is something we might look into doing, you know.
I wouldn't check it anyway. Let's just keep it simple.
So yeah, we'll get the list out.
Okay. Anything else?
Move to adjourn?
I'll make a motion, I'll second it.
All right, this ninth meeting is.